PM.
Yeah, go ahead, Marco.
Welcome to the City of Manistee Planning Commission for April 4th, 2024. Please rise for a play.
Uh huh.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the citizens of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Why didn't?
Thank you. Please take your role.
Commissioner Yoder?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
Vice Chair Slavinsky?
Yes.
And Chair Whitlam?
Yes, thank you. Did Mick contact anyone?
No.
Okay, alright.
Is something wrong with him?
Uh, he was at Ted Ross's funeral today.
Oh.
So.
Well, nothing medically you're speaking to?
She come on?
No, he will not be here. Approval of agenda. At this time, the Planning Commission can take action to approve the April 4th, 2024 meeting agenda. Please, uh, is there a mo- is there a motion?
I'll motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Bob, second by Pam. Discussion? None. Please take your role.
Commissioner Yoder?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
Vice Chair Slavinsky?
Yes.
Chair Whitlam?
Yes, thank you. Conflicts of interest at this time, Chair can ask any, if members have any type of conflict on the agenda tonight. None? Okay. Approval of minutes. At this time, the Planning Commission can approve the March 7th, 2024 meeting minutes. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion. We accept the minutes.
Motion by Marlene, second.
Ah, well.
By Roger. Discussion? None. Please take your role.
Commissioner Yoder?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
Vice Chair Slavinsky? Chair Whitlam?
Yes, thank you. Uh, correspondence? Do you have none?
Nope.
Okay, great. Presentation. Mr. Mark Feder.
Yep, let me bring it up here.
Hi, everyone. Happy to be here again, talking to you, giving you an update of what we've been up to at the museum over the last year or so. Um, I think I updated the Planning Commission, oh, probably about, probably about, I think, maybe November of 2022. But this is just a quick update on what we've been up to in 2023 and what we'll be up to in 2024. Um, very briefly, um, I think Theresa usually informs you what's going on with the Historic District Commission. I'll just kind of give you a quick rundown of some of the things that we've been up to over the last couple of years, or excuse me, the last year. Um, of course, with the museum, per our agreement with the city, we work with potential building owners, business owners, planning and zoning department, realtors, environmental specialists, they're on various aspects of historic buildings, including research. That's my job at the museum via the Historic District Commission. Um, so if, if someone wants to come in the Historic District, purchase a property, um, they can come down to the museum, I'll tell you, you know, what information we have regarding the musei- excuse me, regarding the building, when it was built, who built it, who occupied it. Lots of a lot of the things that people want to know whenever they purchase a building downtown. Um, and I usually have photographs and stuff like that, so people can kind of get a sense if they want to fix up the exterior of it, you know, what the building used to look like and what it looked like originally, and so on and so forth. Um, so that's kind of what I do through the Historic District Commission. Um, and so, just as an example, this is, uh, this picture is this building, the Larson Building on the corner of, um, Green Bush and River. Um, I would get out the old city insurance maps and I would show you different aspects of that building. You can see where some of the chimneys used to be and entrances and exits, and so on and so forth. Um, that's that building right on the corner there. Um, uh, you know, that's one of the things that we use. Also newspapers, this is a newspaper article of when that building was, was opened. Um, I can, I dig through the newspapers and can find you that and kind of information as well. Also using city directories, um, and abstracts that we have down at the museum, we can really get into the nitty gritty of it all. Um, so that's always a lot of fun to do, especially working with potential building owners, business owners, um, who come to, uh, come downtown and want to open up a business there or property. Always a lot of fun to do and you get to meet a lot of neat people. Um, overall, in 2023, um, we had just around, uh, I think, I think this was a number that I had through the middle of the year. I think we had a couple more than that, about 25 certificates of appropriateness. Um, pretty common for the most part. That's, uh, that's including new signage, paint colors, um, stuff like that, that's included in there, as well as bigger projects, which I'll mention, uh, here. Um, The Outsider, that's one of the, uh, the, um, businesses and one of the properties that, um, we worked a little bit with the building owner on, as well as discussed that great detail, uh, some of the aspects of that, uh, project, um, uh, before the Historic District Commission as well. That's just one of the projects that we did in 2023. Um, also Snyder Shoes, they put a new, uh, facade on their building. Um, this is, turned out great. Um, I, we, I worked pretty closely with a couple of the folks at Snyder Shoes to ensure that, that, uh, thing, uh, that that project, uh, came to pass. So, it turned out really great. Um, Library, they had put new windows in the rear of their building. Uh, I worked with them, uh, on a couple of different aspects of that, uh, to make that a possibility and, um, uh, to, they replaced the old ones that were there and you really can't tell the difference too much, uh, but these are brand new windows and they, they turned out real great there too, for the library. Just a couple of projects, there were several others, but just to kind of give you an idea of what, of what I do via the Historic District Commission, um, and the things that I can approve and not approve. Uh, sometime, a lot of time when they're bigger projects, lots of moving parts to it, uh, that goes right to the Historic District Commission and, uh, they can kind of figure out or kind of, uh, through the guidelines that we use for the Secretary of Interior, uh, to kind of figure out the, um, uh, the approval process for a potential applicant. But, um, I do a lot of the research stuff and some of these odds and ends and always have a lot of fun doing that, working with people. Uh, the museum overall in 2023, we had 1,424 visitors. Uh, that's down, uh, by se- by several people, uh, compared to 2021, 2022, um, primarily because, um, of the, uh, or at least I'm going to blame it on, uh, the, um, detour. Um, talking to a couple of other business owners down on my end of the street, um, had the same type of problem. Um, uh, a few less people, um, and, uh, that's what I'm going to blame it on anyways. We'll see what happens this year, but this year so far has been pretty good, uh, especially for the winter time. Uh, but, um, but yeah, um, but, uh, there's been worse years than that, but we can't complain too much, but we had a pretty, pretty decent year.
I think a lot has to do, you don't have Ray given tours.
We didn't, and, and there's Ray, Ray Fortier, who was on the Planning Commission for many years. He was our, uh, number one volunteer, uh, for about a decade and Ray is no longer with us and, uh, he, uh, uh, Ray had a very delicate touch with visitors and would provide them with, uh, wonderful tours. Um, and we miss him a lot down there. The place kind of doesn't feel the same without him, uh, but, um, uh, but he always had a, had a, had a lot to do, a lot of interaction with visitors and it always helped me out because I was able to kind of do other things. Uh, but, uh, but yeah, but, um, down, down, down a little bit in 2023, but was, 2024 has been pretty good so far. Um, overall, we had, uh, 76 researchers in 2023. Uh, when I say researchers, these are inquiries that we get, uh, through the website, uh, calls that I get. Um, also the folks, uh, who are, who, uh, move into town, they want to know all about their house and who lived in it and, and, uh, sometimes they think they feel spirits walking around and they want to know if anybody died in there and it's always real fun to kind of do that and, and so on and so forth. But, um, uh, we do a lot of, of course, as I've mentioned before, a lot of genealogy for people. Um, uh, we do, we have a very significant genealogy collection, uh, as I mentioned, property, abstract, city directories, photographs, all that great stuff. Um, believe it or not, people from all over the world, uh, come to Manistee to do research. Um, doesn't happen all the time, but, uh, this past year I had a couple of people from Norway come to Manistee. They, one of the big stops in the States was to come to Manistee and do research at our little museum and, uh, so that's, uh, kind of fun to do. People from Texas, people from Seattle, um, you get to meet a lot of people. Um, so overall, altogether, we had about 76 researchers. Um, and, uh, once again, a lot of fun to work with those people. Uh, we also did some work, uh, some research work for the police department. Um, uh, we did, we worked a little bit on the grant, uh, process, uh, the previous year for, uh, the North River Walk, um, and then also kind of worked with the Department of Transportation over the last year, uh, to kind of revamp their trolley tours and so on and so forth. Um, this is in addition to a couple of other odds and ends that, um, you know, I, I get random calls on, um, uh, but, uh, those are a couple of the people that we worked with over the last year. Uh, we did a special exhibit. Um, we did, of course, we did a holiday exhibit, uh, in 2023, kind of a smaller one this year. Uh, but we also did, uh, our main exhibit was called Manistee in 40 Objects, where we, um, identified kind of 40 really cool, important, uh, artifacts around the museum and, um, made descriptions, uh, made, had descriptions made that are, um, in the cool little, um, standees and, uh, people can walk by and scan the QR code that'll take them to the website, which will inform them about more of the information regarding this particular object that they were looking, looking at. So, uh, that kind of pertained to some of the families and younger people that come into the museum throughout the summer. Um, and so that turned out to be a, a pretty, a pretty fun exhibit to put together and a lot of interaction with people as well. Um, I also gave several lectures throughout the community. I gave six of them, uh, in 2023. Um, talked to the Planning Commission, uh, of course, well, actually, that was the previous year in 2022, I'm going to count that one. Um, talked to the Lakeside Club, uh, talked to the, had a big one for the Parks Commission. Uh, we did, I did, I've done two for the Wagner Center over the last six months. Um, and of recent time, I did one in Onekoma and I did one at The Outsider as well, uh, over the last month. And then I'll be doing one for the Parks Commission here again in May. Uh, but I did six of them total in, in 2023 and I've, uh, we'll do at least eight of them here in 2024. So, once again, well, fun to keep the, um, public informed about our, uh, history and, uh, and kind of keep that at the, at the forefront of people's minds, um, so we get to do a lot of fun. I get to pick those topics out for the most part and, um, get to find some, uh, some, uh, some fun, uh, some fun ways to talk about our local history. So. Um, you know, there are some people who say that we don't do enough to, um, promote, uh, local history. I think we do a pretty good job, but I'm biased. Um, and, uh, for, um, 12 years, I've done the Looking Back, uh, articles for, for the Manistee News Advocate. That's what was happening in Manistee in, uh, 2040, 60, 80 years ago. That's daily, uh, 60 days a week in the newspaper, what was happening on this date in Manistee. That's always a lot of fun. Get a lot of phone calls and some emails about people who, who, that was them, that was relating, that the, the little blurb is relating to, or that was their father or grandfather. Um, so it's a kind of a fun way to interact with, with, uh, the community, uh, via, via the newspaper. Um, uh, and then I also, uh, kind of picked up the mantle from my predecessor, Steve Harold, who started a weekly, uh, local history column in the News Advocate in 1976. That's 50 years, almost 50 years of, of weekly newspaper articles. That's thousands upon thousands upon thousands of, uh, of articles on Manistee's history. Um, and I have continued that in, in my 15 years at the museum. Um, and once again, fun way to get, uh, local people, uh, involved in, in history. Um, so that's, those are really two ways that I get a lot of feedback from the community and, um, and I think it's a special thing. I think it's, uh, not many communities do that and I think we're special in that we, um, uh, we, we keep that, we keep that tradition alive. So, um, also, um, you're not going to find, uh, too many communities that have 150-page, um, historic sites booklet. Uh, that's something that I work closely with, uh, the Tourism Authority, as well as the tribe, um, in making sure that our history, uh, is told in a kind of a fun way and, and, and informative way. And, uh, this is something that was put out of the fall of 2022. Um, we've got a lot of requests for it at the museum, gone through a lot of boxes of them through people who are visiting our community. Um, once again, uh, bigger cities, bigger communities throughout the state, um, they don't have as comprehensive as a historic sites booklet as we do in Manistee. Uh, in addition to that, we have the 92nd Historic Walking Tours, where people can pick those up. It's a condensed version of a couple of different tours, uh, that, um, you know, if, uh, people are kind of out and about, they just kind of want to, want to hear the basics or see the basics, uh, they can pick that up and kind of get an idea. Um, uh, so I, I think that, especially in my time at the museum, that, uh, local history, um, has, has, are, the way we tell has gotten even better, uh, not just through the iterations of the historic sites, not just through, um, uh, the stuff we do for the newspaper, but also, um, you know, there are, there are YouTube videos, about, I think, 20 of them, that go in depth and tour some of these houses that you can't get into. Um, and I think the Tourism Authority, uh, has really done a nice job in doing that. So, um, uh, so I think, I think we're doing a pretty good job. Um, but of course, I'm biased because I'm in it every day. So, um, but, um, but these are just some of the projects that we've been involved in in the last year, year and a half, um, and that we've seen real positive results from, especially people visiting our community. Uh, very briefly, I'm sure you're all aware of the Waterworks Building, uh, the, the, we finally were able to, to vacate that kind of once and for all, uh, la- late last summer. Um, uh, and it was a, it was a massive project because there was a lot of stuff inside. Um, but, uh, through, uh, various volunteers and people throughout the community, we were, we were able to find homes for the majority of the items that were located inside. Um, beautiful building. Um, I hope, and I think it's a lot of people in the community's hope that it will continue on as such. Um, it's just, uh, there's been, there's a lot of factors that have to kind of line up in, in order to get that into something viable. And I, it's my sincere hope that it, it will find the right owner at some point in time down the road. But, um, the museum was inside the building since 1954, um, and, um, it was one of those things that was kind of tough to, to, to do, but we, moving forward with the museum, uh, decided that it was in, in everyone's best interest, uh, that we, um, vacate the building. And finally, we're able to kind of do that here, uh, at the end of last summer.
When was that built?
The, the Waterworks was built in 1882.
Yeah.
And it's, uh, it was built for a couple of different reasons. This is me going off on a tangent, uh, but the primary reason, uh, uh, two primary reasons why the Waterworks was built was public health. Uh, the wa- water hadn't been filtered prior to that, uh, in the city. Um, and two, um, uh, in order to install a fire hydrants, they need a pressurized system. Um, so, uh, the fear of, uh, of, uh, fire breaking out and then the fear of public health were the two reasons why that was constructed. Um, and, um, beautiful building. Um, hope it, hope it finds the right owner at some point in time. So. Um, also, uh, something that we discussed a lot at the, at the, on the museum level, at the, at the museum board, is, uh, the lighthouse. And I'm sure some of you are, are aware of, 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 of the museum's involvement with the lighthouse. In 2011, uh, the museum signed a concession agreement with the City of Manistee to maintain and upkeep, uh, and manage the affairs of the lighthouse. Uh, this was a project that was primarily spearheaded by former museum director Steve Harold, who after he officially retired the first time at the museum, continued on as the lighthouse coordinator. Um, uh, and, uh, about five or six years ago, um, uh, anyone who can remember the lighthouse, uh, prior to what it looked like now, it was kind of an old rust bucket. Uh, didn't look very good. It wasn't very attractive. Nobody was, was, uh, really, uh, moving forward with, with getting it fixed up and repaired and painted. And Steve, uh, in the museum spearheaded that project to get the exterior of that painted, raised the money for it, did all the work for it, and it turned out great. Um, uh, it was always our plan to kind of have that open to the public inside. Um, there's, there's several staircases that you go up in the platform and another staircase and then another platform. Um, uh, but it needs a lot of work done inside. Um, at the museum, I'm a staff of one down there, um, and, uh, we don't have, uh, and of course, pulled in, you know, 12 different directions throughout the day. Um, uh, we found that, uh, and then after COVID, uh, found out that, um, uh, my time was probably better spent in other areas. And so, um, out of the blue, I got a call from the folks at the Sobel Point Lightkeepers Association, uh, which is an organization that has, uh, four lighthouses. Um, they manage four lighthouses. Um, uh, they are located in Lennington and when I say manage them, they have a staff, uh, to, that, that works on them, people that maintain them, and also volunteers that act as docents. Um, I got a call from them that said, hey, maybe we could partner up sometime. And I said, hey, maybe you might want to take it over. Um, uh, and so that took over, uh, several different conversations that we had internally at the museum, uh, with city staff as well as with the folks at Splica. Um, and, um, uh, plans are moving forward for, hopefully Splica will take over the management of the lighthouse. Will still be owned by the city, but Splica would manage it. And that would mean that they would, um, uh, get the money to fix up the inside, uh, have it open for tours, um, uh, and so on and so forth. And they would have, you know, volunteer docents stay for a week in Manistee to open it up and, 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 and keep it safe and so on and so forth, as people go in and out of it. Um, this is, I think, would be something that would be, um, very beneficial to, to the city at large, um, because you have people who are already established, uh, and have all the contacts and the know-how, um, as opposed to the museum, which is me and probably a couple of volunteers that would be kind of spearheading this. Um, so I think it's a very positive thing for the community. Hopefully it can, it, it all goes through. Hopefully we'll find out within the next several months, um, um, if, uh, if it all works out. But, um, of course, these people have the reach that will bring people into the community, a lot of lighthouse aficionados out there. And that means people visiting the lighthouse, uh, spending money downtown or in and about the city, hotels, so on and so forth. Um, so that would certainly be a very positive thing for the community. Um, so, um, and a very great, uh, group of people at the Sobel Point Lightkeepers Association. So I hope that, we all hope that kind of goes through and, uh, hopefully I'll have an update about that in the, in the coming. And last but not least, the museum. Um, uh, you know, we spend all of our time analyzing and discussing, picking apart history, but we always don't spend a lot of, a lot on the needed time in, okay, what's the future of this organization? What's the future of this building? What's the future of our museum? So like, uh, middle last year, we met as a group, as a museum board and had a couple strategic planning sessions and, um, are kind of going to move forward with, um, the overall preservation of our building, um, because it's a really cool place and deserves to be preserved for the future. And so, uh, we've been, uh, discussing, uh, the matter with, um, a couple of, uh, of preservation architects and, um, hopefully we'll be, uh, moving forward with a study, a preservation study of the building sometime this year. Um, uh, so it's, uh, it's important to preserve, um, it's authentic. It's not one of those recreations that historic groups get together and want to, and want to make. Um, this is the real deal. The shelving, the floors, ceilings, um, it's all still intact and it's a very unique place. So, uh, we hope to, um, continue to keep that, that preserved and for the future. So. So that's kind of my brief little rundown. Um, are there any questions, um, before I, before I sit down?
No.
Any questions?
Very nice.
Yeah, no. Earlier you had, showed like the old fireplace.
Sure, yeah.
You, uh, do you have the old property description abstracts?
I, I have, uh, I don't have a full set.
Okay.
But I have, uh, uh, portions of them. The, the, uh, the Register of Deeds office has the full set and all the, all the, uh, accompanying, um, uh, papers that go along with it. Um, but, uh, in most cases, I can, I, I can, I can, I can approximate.
I dig into the courthouse quite a bit.
Yeah.
Some of them I'm going, oh, where is this stuff?
Yeah.
You might have a better grasp of certain areas of town.
Sure.
Better than it there. Cause, cause I run into that problem with some property surveys I gotta look.
Sure. Come down and see me sometime and, uh, and, uh, and we'll see if we can dig anything up for you and, and see what, see if, uh...
Cause I know, I know a couple of people actually brought back to me the, or abstracts from the original land grants.
Okay, oh, gotcha.
Those are the great ones.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. Um, yeah, come down and see me sometime and, uh, and we'll see if, uh, if we can, if, if our files can, can help you out.
When the stuff comes about, I'll, I'll.
Be happy to.
Okay, thanks.
Absolutely.
Pam, you got anything?
No.
Yeah, yeah.
Mark, thanks for blowing us away.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Absolutely. Happy to do it. Thanks for having me.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thanks a lot. Thanks. Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Um, we were going to have another speaker, Bridgette Vanderhoff, um, but she is ill today. Okay. Um, Bridgette will be the, she is opening the Lakeside Social out by the car ferry. So she's working, working with Eagle right now. Um, she expects to have something in the next month and she'd like to come back, maybe May, June and present. So.
What is she opening?
Lakeside Social. It's the restaurant, uh, by Little Caesar's, the old Little Caesar's.
Uh, uh.
And then she is working to, uh, bring a housing complex on US 31 North and Frost Road, on those 18 acres.
Oh, yeah, that's been, yeah.
So she did, she did buy the property.
Oh, good.
And she's working through financing, uh, with that too, so.
Is that where the camping, down on the, by the water?
No, no.
Where the old cabins used to be, years ago, by Frost Road.
On the, on the west side of 31?
Yeah.
As you're heading out of town, be on the left-hand side?
Yeah.
By Frost Road.
Oh, that villa, something villa there.
It used to be.
Like Burger King and?
No, no, no.
Farther down.
Farther, farther north, oh, by the hospital.
Oh.
So it's right, right by, what is it? What real estate company?
It's, no, it's not. Uh, it's across from Parkdale Auto, isn't it?
No, it's, uh, by, uh, Cola Banker.
Your stuff.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Uh, by Cola Banker. Used to be all those cabins years and years ago out there. Little cabins, they used to be out there.
Yeah.
Before my time up here.
A little bit, yeah.
Yeah.
But yeah, she, uh, she lives in Grand Haven. Uh, she has a vested interest in Manistee, wants to see it come back. Um, we had, I had a short meeting with her today and, um, she wants housing, to create jobs, to bring in people. Um, so, I hope she can do it. I, I know she can do it. She's very aggressive.
And money's got to be there. That's the problem though, Marco.
Yeah, well, she's, she has her avenues.
Yeah, yeah, I hope so.
Yeah.
Hope so.
So, all right, moving along.
Yeah, go ahead.
And then, uh, public comments? Is there anyone in the, uh, greater public? No? Okay.
Okay.
New business. City of Manistee Master Plan Request Proposal.
So I.
P, March 24.
Yes, so I printed off, um, a new one that is placed in front of you. That is the, um, Master Plan Request for Proposal. So, that is going to be going out for bid for a consulting firm to help us vamp up and, uh, review the master plan. And, uh, the letter includes what the expectations are going to be. So, the new letter that I have in front of you is replacing the one that I had attached to the agenda. After taking a couple of days and rereading it and asking a couple of opinions of others, um, I decided to take out the first part that said the county of Manistee. I thought, we really maybe didn't need that. We're the city, so I just kind of took that paragraph out. Um, then on the next page, at the very top, you will see that I missed a key important part, which we are the redevelopment-ready community.
Yeah.
So I wanted to make sure that that needed to be included. So that is all stated up there. Um, and then just the last page I had, um, was how to submit the RFP. I extended the date to May 10th of 2024. They need to have a certain amount of time to review those and get those bids in, so I changed that. But, um, if you wanted to go over it any further or to review anything else, but I'd like to know, um, anything you'd like to add, anything you'd like to take away, anything that I've forgotten, some input?
No, I don't. You want that now or do you want that coming up?
Now, if you had a chance, or we can, I know, or we can go through it. We can go through it. So, the very first page, let's just start with that. We have the executive summary. So of course, we know when it was adopted.
Yeah.
And we know every five years it should be reviewed.
Right.
And then I put at the very last sentence, the grant amount was for $33,000. The next paragraph, the purpose, the main intent is for a consulting firm to review the cost estimate for updating the current master plan, plain and simple. Now we go down to the City of Manistee, describes who and what we are. Then we have structures and responsibility. And this tells us all about what the city council's responsibilities are. The next paragraph is the Planning Commission and when that was established and that we review and hold over the Michigan Planning Enabling Act.
Right.
Go to the next page. That's when we, or I added the redevelopment-ready community paragraph.
Yeah.
Now we get into what the contents, the responses to the RFP must include. A brief written introduction, firm history, experience, um, expertise, um, kind of a summary of other works, engagement collection, uh, detailed subscription, um, of availability, public engagement, firm's experience and all of that.
Mm-hmm.
What it should look like, but not limited to, of course, the requirements are from the Michigan Enabling Act.
Mm-hmm.
Now we get into contractor facilitation. Um, obviously they would be working closely with me and with all of you in the Planning Commission.
Mm-hmm.
Communication, again, is going to be with myself, you, any other staff Communication, again, is gonna be with myself, you, any other staff that we have. Now this is another part I put down. It says, "The contractor staff will attend four city planning commission meetings and two city council meetings over the course of 12 to 24 months." Would you feel that they should or need to come more than that? Or do you feel?
I don't know though.
Four, or we could expand it four to six meetings that they might need to attend?
How about at least just put in there at least four meetings?
Okay.
If they feel to come to more.
Okay.
Do they make at least four meetings and if they come reason why they need to come to a fifth or sixth meeting?
Well, they're gonna, yeah, they're gonna bill you for everything they do, so.
Yep, yep. All right, noted. Then the next page gets really into the nitty-gritty about the scope and outline and process, so I'll just have you... This is where the review and format master plan content, this is where I would put attend four. So I would put attend at least four city planning commission meetings, two council meetings, acquire all this information, gather public input. I'm estimating four vision sessions or it could be less. I guess that also depends on what the contract comes in at, you know, the, the amount.
Yeah.
So we have some other things that I'll just give you a minute to look through or see if anybody has any questions on.
Yeah, yeah.
This consulting firm that you're going to hire, are they local?
That's what I would put the bid out for and they would get back to us.
But that's what you're looking for, or no?
Well, it will be the top three and then from there it's gonna be the decision between what you guys decide, local, cost, I mean, cost is gonna be a big one.
Sure.
Um, what they've done before, what, what we've noticed them doing, what examples they have.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, it could be the, the same one that they had in 2016.
Who did we have? Do you know?
Um, I don't know, I don't have it.
Wait.
Is it in your books that are in front of you, maybe? No?
I don't know.
Or is that all the zoning ordinances? It might not be ordinances, yeah.
Yeah, I don't recall.
But I can get you that information, I will let you know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Nothing.
We should know.
Yeah. I mean, like I mentioned at the last meeting, if you could kind of stay with somebody that's done it with us before, rather than open a whole new can of worms with somebody, I mean, I think it might be easier. Or actually, I did notice this Networks Northwest.
Mm-hmm.
Helping, uh, who, where was it on the internet? Brethren? But they also do the facilitation and the master plan and they're working pretty close with them. And that may be, I don't know, uh, if, if they're a company that does it or if they just help. But, uh, that might be somebody who's working in the area and also we can have an idea.
Right.
That's Rob Carson, isn't it?
Yeah, Rob, Rob Carson's with the Networks North.
Okay.
That was, oh, okay.
Yeah, Rob used to be here.
Yeah, 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 right, right. Well, isn't that Mike, uh, Saltzka?
Mike's up there now too.
He's with them too, isn't he?
Yeah.
Yeah, but, uh, you bring them in from, you know, big city and, yeah, that's true. Oh, I think you did okay here, girl.
So then the last page, we just have the...
Yeah.
Deliverables and how to submit and just a simple schedule, so.
Yeah. Yeah, that's true. Well, for the amount of time I'm here, I'm telling you, nothing's on the schedule. You can put the dates down and if things work out, they're fine, you know, but...
Well, but we also have to have so much done and completed and I have to give a quarterly report to the state where we got the grant from, so...
On your production.
I need to try to stay consistent.
Yeah, yeah, you're moving forward.
Yes, absolutely.
Can we still use the COVID-19 thing? Everybody lost stuff because of COVID, everything.
All the college athletes are using it. It's good. I think it's good.
Yeah, do nothing, well, we lost COVID, it was COVID.
Okay.
Yeah, I think you did all right.
So I don't know if we need a roll call vote or just an agreement? I'm not sure if you can help me out with that, Mark.
What do you want to do, Marco?
We can, uh, take a motion.
Okay.
Motion to accept this.
Yes.
Accept this document.
Yep.
Prove it anyhow.
Ted, can we, like, a motion to approve this document for, um, application for the RFP? Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
By Rogers, second by Marlene.
Yeah.
Question?
And it's with the change that we're gonna put at least four city planning commission meetings.
Yes.
Okay.
Changes.
We don't need to change the city council ones.
No.
Okay, any, any further discussion? No? Please take role.
Commissioner Yoder?
Yes, oh, yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
Vice Chair Slavinsky?
Yes.
Chair Whitlam?
Yes, thank you. Business Master Plan.
Okay, so the last time I was here, I let all of you know that I went to the class for the Michigan Association of Planning and Zoning. I did the Planning and Zoning Essentials. I was able to receive this book and, um, it was a great class. It was for one day in Frankenmuth, learned a lot of information. While I was there, um, I, uh, purchased a few other books too, but I'll talk about those in a little bit. Um, the next, uh, looks like, um, 314 Sibbons. So as of yesterday, that, um, permit has expired, May 3rd. I believe we had talked at May 4th or 5th, but May 3rd it was. Um, I did receive an email, um, about two weeks ago from Steve.
One second.
Oh, sure.
May, it expired or April?
Oh.
It was March.
Oh, no, it is May 3rd.
This is April.
I'm thinking that's next month, you're right.
Okay.
This is April 4th.
Yes.
Oops.
Sorry about that.
All right.
But we still needed an update.
The gentleman that came before us a few times with...
Wanted to try to drive everything for him.
Fourth and Second Street, the old Ringo Building.
Yeah. The, yeah, the green building. Um, I did want to let you know that he did reach out a couple of weeks ago, um, wanting and asking, um...
An extension.
For an extension and I just reiterated that that was not gonna happen.
Not gonna happen.
Yep, so...
I thought he would be here, but...
Well, and that's what I expected, I did invite him to come this evening. So I think that's what I was getting confused. I did invite him to come this evening, but he's not here, so.
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
Yeah.
Let's see, the next is, uh, 457 River Street, The Outsider. I've been working with John, um, great communication with him about, um, some of the things that were going on and he has brought something to the Historical District. Um, did talk about, um, the sitting area outside. I know he had some things going on, was busy, so we're talking. I've not had to put anything into a letter yet. I know he did have the ribbon cutting ceremony, he been busy with that, so. We've got good communication and we're getting there, so.
No, not to interrupt, but Mark mentioned that he was also working with him, so are you, you're all working?
Yes, yes.
To make sure he does the proper way?
Yes.
Okay, that makes sense.
And then I also oversee the Historical District Board, or not oversee, but work with the Historical District, the HDC meetings too, so, and the ZBA, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep, so.
Okay.
Yep, doing that.
Okay.
Yes. So the next is Blight. So I wanted to, let's see if I've got that in here. So at the city council meeting on Tuesday night, um, Ed had, Bradford had given, um, his presentation about the budget. And in with the budget, I just wanted to let you know about, that the budget is proposing a 20-hour-a-week code enforcement for the police department. And the position will be working with, um, obviously the police department and also, uh, the building inspector. So then I just want to let you know that for Blight, for an example, if it's a structure, that would be building code and that would be for Jerry. If it's Blight, that is junk in the yard, junk cars, cars on blocks, cars that are not registered, trash, that goes to the police. So those are the two differences with the Blight. And also the big thing we've been trying to push is the C Click Fix. Doing those because then also gives traceability of where does that get sent out to? Who gets it assigned to them? What is the process that they're doing? When are they going to see it completed? Then when is it completed? And then it's closed out and the person on the other end of submitting that C Click Fix can see where we're at with the whole process. So we've really been encouraging. We still don't mind them calling Jerry, calling myself, calling the police and doing that, but C Click Fix really is making accountability for everyone. And also it might be assigned to somebody that you don't even know that works for the Parks Department, but they're behind the scenes and they're working on things and getting things done, so. Yep, graffiti, you know, that's something. There's a lot of things. If you see it, click it and we're gonna fix it. So it is a great app, really is.
Needs to work for the droids.
Yes, and that's what I've heard too and I've said that, yes.
So does Ed take care of that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Moving along, public comments, communication. Anyone? No? Okay.
No.
Staff and board reports.
Hmm. So the site plan review. It's not homework, but I'd like to give you one of these each to bring it home to get ready for our class.
Uh-oh.
I saved the best for last.
This is right up Bob's alley.
Yeah.
Probably.
Could probably bring in all this equipment for this.
That's right. So this is an example of a site plan. And this is something that I would get in my office and these are some of the things that I expect when they fill out a special land use permit. So it will go over some questions on the second and third page. Um, some calculation, which is real easy figuring out square feet and all of that. But the best part is, on the back of this page, when I ask individuals, even builders or family members, hey, I need you to draw this, scope this out, tell me where you want to put that accessory building. Tell me where you want to do this retaining wall and a driveway and... So it's really neat, some of the, I should start a, a book of all the cool site plans that I get. Some that are very, uh, meticulous and great, some that you just laugh like, did you give this to your grandson or your...
Yeah, did your grandson draw this?
So, yeah, yes. But this will get, at least get you guys a little prepped for when Mary Riley comes. And that's gonna be the April 22nd.
Yeah.
Um, and it's gonna be at 5:45 here in, um...
22nd.
Yep. Council chambers and don't forget, I'm feeding all of you, so.
Is it downstairs though?
Nope, we're gonna do it here, we're gonna have it in the back room there.
All right.
But we are going to in here.
Very good.
April 22nd.
Yep.
5:40.
Yep, and we'll have dinner.
It's time to hang on here.
Remember Bob?
Yeah, I know.
Oh, yeah.
Cookies.
Okay, yeah.
Yes.
I've talked to my chef already.
Yes.
Or your baker. My chef.
Yeah.
Baker. Okay, my baker.
Okay.
Yeah, the butcher, the baker and the candlestick maker.
Okay, guest speakers for next month?
Yeah, guest speakers.
We have, uh, Kurt Vanderwall. And then we have, um, Sammy, and I can't pronounce her last name.
Gushavitz.
There you go.
Yes.
Sammy Miller.
The Visitors and Convention Bureau.
Oh, okay.
Yes. Yes.
Yeah, there's way too many.
Yeah.
Great.
Just call her Sammy.
Uh-huh.
And then we touched base about the class, that's...
Uh-huh.
Uh, the next, um, the MSHDA, that was the grant conference that I went to that same week of the Planning and Zoning Essentials to the state. Um, the state had rolled out a new website and an easier to use website. Also, if you apply and submit your information for one grant, all of the other grants will be in that same area. Now instead of being redundant or copying and pasting same things, it's all gonna be in one area. Also, while I was there, they touched base about the CHIL grant, no applications, still they keep, every time I talk to them, it's a month, it's a month. So I'm not sure when that's gonna be, um, just frustrating, but I, I know that they've got a lot at their end and this is a new grant. So everybody's been patient with me and with that. The next thing, um, I have on here is the Michigan Association of Planning. So I wanted to show you that I did get the Planning and Zoning Essentials.
All right.
A next one, just in time for our class and everything, Site Plan Review. So whatever Mary's gonna be talking about us to, we've got this. Uh, zoning ordinance A to Z.
Oh.
And then we've got making or managing risk, making sound decisions. So I'm going to also have a little library in my office that I invite all of you to stop in, just to see me. Want to check something out? It's all here, the materials are here.
Hmm.
And this is something that you could bring home with you and read or review. But I also might start taking a little bit of tidbits, like I did stay with the site plan and giving to all of you and just show you, hey, this is some of the things I encounter. These are the things that might be coming your way, let's review them and let's go over them, so.
Very good. Now, if I could, Mark, can I?
Really, go ahead.
Not, you say stop at your office, so are, are you in your office like the eight hours a day or?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, so if you, you just stop and you'll be there?
Yep, unless I have a meeting or something, but yes, most of the time, yes.
That's Tuesday mornings though, isn't it? Tuesday mornings you have meetings?
Yes, Tuesday mornings is...
Okay, just one.
Yeah. Or just call me and see if I'm there.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Text if you have that and just stop in, absolutely.
He has a bowl of chocolates too, so.
Yep.
Bowl of chocolates.
Yes, bowl of chocolates.
She's sitting in front of Mark.
Yeah.
Yes. So then I do want to also just, uh, let you know one other thing. So with the code enforcer officer that, um, was in the budget, we also have a community development, uh, clerical assistant that is hopefully gonna be passed. The budget proposes a 20-hour-a-week for myself, Community Development Director and also for the building department. Um, building inspector needs help with letters, um, setting up rental inspections, some other things. Um, I could use the help, you know, helping with packets and phone calls and other things than the grant. So hopefully that gets passed and I'll be able to have an assistant, so.
Well, I thought you have an assistant. Well, what's the lady sitting next to you?
She has her own position, go ahead and tell her position.
Oh, okay.
I started, um, here at the city doing payroll and benefits and I still do that. I'm also the deputy clerk, so I work with Heather to do elections and voter registration. And when Teresa came on board, uh, they were looking for helpers, you know, to help with minutes and I have experience with minutes with city council, so it just seemed to be a good fit to come up here and do this.
So now we're gonna hire someone so you don't have to come up here?
Well, I don't know, that's to be determined.
Yeah, that's to be determined.
Yeah.
I mean, she's a great helper, but she's got her own position.
Well, yeah, it sounds like, yeah.
She's been very busy.
Playful there.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, all right. Said he never stops.
That's right.
Well, I guess. And money to do all the hiring, that's what I can't figure out.
Grant.
Grants?
I think a grant money, wasn't it?
Yep, that's part of it, yes.
Yeah, but you can't go on grant money, 'cause that only lasts so long.
Right, but we also are doing and keeping our rental inspections.
Oh, well, yeah, I mean...
And our building inspections, and anything that we see through See Click Fix that possibly somebody needs to get an accessory building, 'cause they have all kinds of junk in their yard, and then we'd give them a building permit, and so all that adds up.
Yeah, that's true.
Yes, it does.
Fence permits?
That's right.
Fence permits.
Yep. Twenty-five dollars, but hey, it all helps, so that's one, you know?
Yeah, that's true, that's true. Well, you gotta be compensated, for sure.
Yep, that's right, so all of it helps.
Yeah, yeah, twenty'll turn into thirty hours, you know how that'll go, too. But, okay, I'm sorry, Mark.
So the last thing I just was gonna talk about is the Historical District. We had our meeting yesterday, and the other thing I just wanted to share with you is the shop at Heritage Square, that is 390 River Street. You know that they took down the canopy, and so they're working with Madeline Lamb, who came in here and gave us the presentation. They're working with the Johnson Sign Company. He's working with Madeline on what they're gonna be proposing and looking into for that. Also, he's got several businesses in there, and so now I'm getting all of those businesses updated with business registration. The Building Inspector is going in, and he's doing all of his inspections and making sure he's got all the permits and everything else. And then also, the Fire Department has gone in and done their inspections, so, yep. But it's coming along, and again, we need it to look with the Historical District, you know, preserve it, and, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's good.
Peter, looking for a name for that project now, there?
Yes, he posted, yeah, I heard that yesterday, too, put something out there on Facebook about possibly changing the name or something along that line.
He said because he doesn't consider the building Victorian, so he didn't, he wanted to kind of get away from that.
It was a late 50s building or something?
Mm-hmm, yep.
You know, coming up with a catchy name for the place to bring people in, it's a good thing.
Yes, I mean, at least he's thinking outside the box and wanting some input, and that's what we need.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's good.
Yeah.
But that's all I have.
All right. Laura, do you have anything?
I do not.
Okay, thank you. Members' discussion, start with Roger.
Yeah, no, other than that, life's pretty good right now. So I have nothing to really, I suppose you're still working on the hospital up there to get rid of that one.
Yes.
And of course, you know, the vacant buildings, the war hardware, and, you know, things like that, and the Oldsons, or nothing on the Oldsons, old store there, it's too bad. Or how about the bridge? We got any, you know, anymore?
There's been some updates and news, but yeah, but, yeah, just May, I think that they're opening. Kyle could probably let us know when that is, yeah.
In June, I just thought maybe they got the parts in or something. But no, other than that, Marco, thank you, it's, we're doing good.
Marlene?
Yeah, I wanted to ask, like, anybody that's gonna build a house or anything comes before you have it. I noticed the other day Swedorski's down on Cherry, and I don't know if that's Bryant or Broad, one of those.
Yep.
And they flattened it, staked out.
Mm-hmm.
Now they got the weirdest little, like, shed-style footings or something, like five of them. What are they putting in there, a house, or is it a bunch of little...
Houses going in.
Yeah, houses going in there.
Because it's not a whole square of foundation, it's funky little...
And that part would be the Building Inspector, and he's been out there, and he just gave, they, it had rained a lot, 'cause I saw the pictures of it, but besides that, I don't, that's the building part, I don't know. I just do the setbacks and all the other things, but...
Did you do a survey on that?
No.
Yeah.
So I would, would give Jerry a shout, or stop in and see him?
Yeah.
It just looked strange, 'cause, you know, normal house footings, you got a big footing, but it was like five or six little, like, you would put a shed on type things, you know?
Okay.
It just kind of struck me as odd.
When I didn't, well, and I know Jerry's been out there, but I didn't know if it had been finished, or I know that he was going out there and inspected, but then it had rained a lot and a bunch of clay, so I didn't hear what all was happening with it, so...
It's at the corner of Fifth, I mean Bryant and Cherry.
Cherry.
Bryant and Cherry.
Yeah.
The great lot that's been there for, right across from the country.
After they, that one house that looks like a whole garage across the front, I get nervous when I see weird little footings and stuff, you know?
Right, yeah.
Otherwise, I'm happy I'm on this side of the dirt, everybody seems to be doing good, you're doing a great job, and...
Yeah.
Thank you.
Can't ask for more.
Can, but you won't get it.
I know.
Bob?
Oh, nothing I can think of, just, you're doing a good job, Teresa, and glad you're keeping Mark and I in a loop quite a bit on stuff. And you're not driving us nuts yet.
All right, that's good.
Well, you gotta keep us awake.
Yeah.
Right. Tammy?
I actually have a couple of things. I had a couple of things that people asked me about. Somebody asked me what was going on, if anything was ever gonna be happening with the old car wash of 31, the ones the McCarthys own.
Oh, and the Green Mile?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It does look really bad. It's right next to AJ's Pizza, you know, the one I'm talking about?
Yes, yep, yep.
And I know that at one time, they had thought about putting an additional marijuana business in there somehow, but that never came about, and somebody just commented that it looked really bad right there on the highway.
I think Barney Castle still owns that.
I think, I think McCarthy still do, yeah.
Okay. I can see, I can ask. I have a couple in and out, yep.
Yeah, people ask me these. The other thing is, somebody asked me if it would be possible to get those posters down in that one building before the summer crowd gets here, the one that's at the corner of River Street in Oak.
Gold and Silver?
Yeah, the Gold and Silver. They just said it would be nice to get those signs down.
Well, they're moving.
I know.
They're supposed to be out by the end of the month.
Yeah, I heard that.
And those signs don't really fit the sign ordinance either.
Yeah, I mean, the stuff that's in the windows don't really fit, and they've been up there for a long time, and somebody just said it'd be nice to get them down for summer.
And we are working with the attorney, and that is a process, and...
I'm sure I'm just saying this.
That's all I can...
Somebody asked me.
Yep, nope, that's fine.
I said I'd check.
Yep, that's right, nope.
I'd still like to see the recommendations on the Cityscape report that came in a couple of months ago for this, the River Street.
Oh, that's right.
I'd still like to see those recommendations, and I just am curious, as, you know, that article came out about 2027 US 31 being all redone, who gets to make decisions as to what they're gonna do with that for the city-wise? Who, I mean, is that, I mean, does the city have any input into what's gonna go on with 31?
Well, I've been invited to the, my first meeting, I don't know if it's next week or the following week, that I'm gonna be with MDOT and starting to talk about some of that that we had talked about before during that Green Mile, the entrances, the exit, the road on the side, you know, just kind of communicating, talking, bringing that up, that it was on the site plan for 231 Authentic, but did we make that for everyone during that whole section, or just them, and is it required? Just start that conversation and see where that, I'm kind of being thrown in the middle of it. I was very, very busy, and it was a lot to take in when I first started, but now I'm going to.
Now, you mean, taking out driveways, entrances?
I don't know, that, that might be something in...
We did want to put a common access road.
Access road, right.
Fall back in there and reduce the driveways.
Yes, we did, yeah, you did, yes. So that's something that I'm going to be bringing up with that, and that's all I know that I'm gonna be bringing to the table for it and start to hear.
There were two sections of it, I think there was one section that was this side of the, this side of the bridge as well, part of it.
From Stronach Road to Mesa.
Yeah, from Bryant's, from the BP station to the bridge.
Okay.
And then they were going from, I forgot what street, North Side to 55, it's two separate projects.
Yeah.
I was just wondering who was gonna be...
Well, according, 'cause I went to council meeting with Teresa, they, they were thinking, they were noodling on, called it a road diet?
Yes, a road diet.
Road diet, making the four lanes into three all the way through.
That's what I heard, eh?
That's...
So, but, I mean, we're ways away yet, we're some three years away.
I know, I was just curious as to...
There's gonna be public hearings?
Yes.
So on that, so...
There'll be at least four, I think they said.
Design plans.
Mm-hmm.
You know, usually, usually the way MDOT has their work is they'll have the design plans going by November, by that spring, they'll have their bids out for that job.
Well, I was just curious with, you know, with the tribe putting in the new...
Gateway?
The Gateway Project, there's how that would be affected with...
Right.
When is that meeting?
That's great. That's why I said, it's either next week or the following week that I'll be attending, so...
Where's it at?
I, I don't know, I think maybe here, but I don't, it might be at Spicer, I don't know where it will be at, so...
I don't know where it is.
I'm not, would you be invited? I don't know. I don't know if you can be, I don't know.
Yeah.
I was just invited, so I'm not sure who puts it on or any of that, but I can get you that information, let you know.
I've been to a few of those MDOT ones before at other places, and just to get some feedback on stuff.
You can't come quick enough to fix, fix the highway.
And the other thing, there's, there's a meeting, a second meeting with that group that we had at Spicer's on April 25th or something?
Oh, okay, all right.
I've, I've got a conflict on that one.
Oh, okay.
If I'm able to make it.
All right, good to know, okay, remember that, yep, absolutely.
Yeah, I've got another meeting, so...
I just have a couple of things. One, we already talked about is the Citizen Planner Training on the 22nd, so... I heard through the grapevine that the Chamber did hire a new Economic Development Director. So I wonder if we could, when that happens, can we get him or her in here?
Mm-hmm.
That'd be good.
Uh-huh.
That's interesting.
One thing that's close to me is Blight, as we all talked about here just a few minutes ago. The city is going to be taking down, was it five buildings? Five or six this year?
Five demo, yes. And I had sent you that report, remember?
Yeah.
Yeah, after the meeting last time, as, yeah, the demo permits that we issued.
So, Marco? If you, yes, sir.
Five more than what they've done?
Yes.
Oh.
Yeah, there's one on Rams, Fifth. It's that old brown duplex next to Ramsdale Street.
Across the street, too, maybe?
Not yet, yeah.
Oh, okay, I did hear that.
So that's gonna be a, not a HUD, but a, gosh, what is it? Help me out, help an old man out.
With the housing?
That's all right.
No, it's not housing, it's, they build houses.
Habitat?
Habitat, yes.
Habitat.
So they've probably put up two homes there, 'cause it's a big one.
Oh, yeah.
Right in the area, Fifth Street to 195th, anything on that?
Oh.
No. He's got a bunch of cars again.
Oh, that, that's right.
So, and that moves right along with my next one is top 10 Blight issues, sites, if we could put together a list, you know, that's your homework for the next month?
Sure.
I screwed up, and I didn't do mine, so shame on me, but I will.
Mm-hmm.
And then the last one, I've been thinking about this with the budget. What do you think of the odds of getting us paid? Tyler Township has their planning commission, 75 bucks per meeting. It doesn't matter if they're there for 10 hours or five minutes, I guess 75 bucks. This committee works awful damn hard.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, sometimes we're taken advantage of, which I don't like.[1602.32]